I call a new order for you stamp for federal allegiance.
Our federal allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And we honor republic, liberty and justice. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Barb, do a roll call, please.
Mayor Sue Feldman, council members, Jerry Devine.
Here.
Joe Mielbauer.
Here.
Robert Bauer.
Here.
Rich Scordall.
Here. Moving on, do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Bauer makes that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scordall makes that second. Any discussion? Barring none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve that tonight?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Bauer makes that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Buremark makes the motion for second. Barring any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Before we move on, I'm going to make one adjustment here. At the end of the meeting, right after meeting open to the public, there's reports. We're going to go into closed session here for labor negotiations on contracts. By state law, we have to do that, so I'm not going to hold the public up. I'm going to move attorneys underneath the council members' reports. So we'll go from meeting open to the public, council member reports, and then we'll go closed session. That allows the public to leave at that time, and then we can come back in. So I think that's fair to you. Moving on, anything, meeting open to the public, do I have anyone sign up?
Yes, Sarah Hudwig. Sarah Hudwig, 3709, 220 Main Lane Northwest. Just a suggestion for a possibility on the website. All you beautiful people, we'd like to see your faces. I've heard many people say.
Are you sure?
I don't want to, but I think it's a little less intimidating to people when they can see somebody, so that even if they're calling you or emailing you, they kind of get a, you know, because people will be like, well, who is that person? And you try to explain, well, you can't go with bull, because obviously, you know. So yeah, I just, I think, I've heard from quite a few people now that they would really appreciate seeing, you know, heads of departments and council members and mayor on the website, so they can know.
And I thought I was doing a nice thing by not doing that.
Exactly, you just can't, right? There you go.
Thank you very much. Well, as far as the council, I'm for that myself, so if that's good for the public, I'm for it. But can I just ask you in general, what is the feedback on the website? Is it good, I hope?
People are, I think, if you're on laptop or desktop, it's really good. People do tend to have a few more problems when they're trying to do it on their mobile devices.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know if that's something that, you know, the kinks will work out eventually, or.
Yeah, it's a work in progress, but, you know, going from what we had to what we have, I think is a big change. For the good. So I think, you know, notifications, alerts, and all the stuff that we planned for. So I think it's, you know, work with us, give us your input. I know, I know the team's done a great job, you know, so let's see if we can move it forward. But like I said, it's a work in progress.
Great.
Thanks, thank you. All right, anyone else, Barb?
No one else.
Okay. All right, moving on to public hearings presentation. I'm going to open up a public hearing on input for, is that for both items or just the one item?
I think what we're going to do is have Darcy's presentation first.
Okay.
After that, if you guys have questions for Darcy, you can ask those, and then we'll open it up to the public, close it, and you guys discuss it.
Okay, okay. Darcy?
Okay, good evening, mayor and council, residents and staff. On tonight's agenda is the 2018 budget and property tax levy. And I'm going to go through a short presentation, and then you can, like you discussed, open it up for public input, and then approve it after we're done. So, the budget process starts all the way back in April, when we estimate all the salaries for the, all the employees in the city. In May, the department heads receive worksheets to complete to request their new budgets for the new year. In June, we work on revenue estimates, debt service amounts, capital budgets, and then we receive those department head requests back. Then during July and August, we enter that and try and come up with what we are going to request for a levy. In September, we set that preliminary levy, and from that point, we cannot go up any at all. We can only lower it. And then in December, we set the final levy tonight. After the levy is approved, then I will submit it to the county, and then that will get certified onto next year's taxes. Our budget goals always have been to maintain high quality and cost effective public services, address priorities set by city council, and to try and maintain our strong fiscal position. As you can see by this slide, the levy which was proposed in September is going to, it was set at $3,488,791. It is broken down into two general categories, which is the general operating budget of $3,120,201, and then the debt service levy of $368,590. And you can see there's a, the new 2017 A bond that came on. That was due to our EDA lease revenue bond, got refunded, and it went from the EDA lease revenue bond, which used to be funded through the general fund, now to where it has its own separate debt service levy. So that's, it kind of came out of the general operating levy and moved down. We added in a couple $60,000 for building, future building improvements, trying to provide for future years, and some $60,000 for street improvements. Those were a couple new things that we did this year. Overall, our philosophy in setting this budget was to keep the tax rate for the city of, city of Grand, sorry, city of St. Francis level, which was, and we did that. It did go down just a little bit by the time the market value was set. So you can see by this slide that our history of the levy started out in 2009 at $2,724,202. Now, this has been an increase of $764,589 over that timeframe. That's a 28% increase, but if you average that out over the 10 years, that's only 2.8% per year. And you can see several years that we were held to levy limits there, where we couldn't increase the levy at all. So I think that, you know, the 2.8 is a very reasonable amount each year. Now, coming up, a couple weeks ago, all the residents or taxpayers would have gotten their proposed budget notice in the mail. I do want to point out that it does show you that, like on this slide down at the bottom, the taxes are going down by 9.2%. The one thing that isn't on here is the levy referendum for the school, because that was approved after the tax notices. So that will come on now that it's been approved. So looking at the tax notices, the first thing I would look at is your values up there on the top. And this homeowner, their value started out in 2017 at $215,500, and this year it's valued at $224,600. You can look down at market, or the homestead exclusion, and they lost some of that, because that is based on your value. That is, has a sliding scale there. You lose it, and at a certain point, you don't get that anymore. So this property, because the value went up, you look down, and their taxes actually went up by $49.74, but that's all due to the market value increase. It isn't due because we raised our tax rate, it's due to their market value. So as I talked, what affects the property taxes, those market value changes, the levies that are set by any of the districts, the county, the city, the school district, and fiscal disparities, which fiscal disparities is the seven county metro area shares the increases in the commercial and industrial values, and the new values that come on. It's spread over all of the districts. So we share in any increases in industrial or commercial in the whole seven county metro. We put in some also, because if we get new commercial and industrial, it goes into that pot. But we put in somewhere in the $200,000, but we pull out like $800,000. So it's, it is very good for the city of St. Francis. So going back to residential homes, if you look and see this chart shows the differences in your 2018 taxes and your 2017 taxes. Now, this is based on the home staying the same value. If a home changes in value, that's going to change. A median, median home value is $162,700 for 2018. And looking across there, if their value had stayed the same at that amount in 2017 and '18, they would have seen a drop in their city taxes of $2.60. But market, the estimated market value can make that go up or down. So going over to the general fund, the total revenues are proposed at $4,148,872. Our biggest portion of that is taxes, and we have some licenses and permits, which is mainly building permits. We have fines and forfeits, which is mainly the amount that we get from the state of Minnesota. Intergovernmental, which our big, the biggest portion of that is LGA, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. Charges for services, which includes admin fees from other funds into the general fund, and our contract with the school for police. There is miscellaneous, which includes interest and some rent, and then the transfer comes from the liquor store. And $10,000 of that transfer actually goes to the payday fireworks. So as I said before, local government aid is a huge part. It's the second largest revenue coming in, coming into this general fund. And you can see that for 2018, it's, it's at $406,858. Now, this is an increase of $47,081. And you can see by the chart, for several years, they took most of it away from us. It was very volatile there for several years, and the city kind of struggled with, you know, where it sat with that every year, and some years, in the middle of the year, they took it away from us. Now, the history over the last five years, it's been pretty good, and it's been increasing. So hopefully, that stays, because when they play with it, it really affects the general fund. So we'll move over to the expenditures in the general fund. They too are proposed at $4,148,872, and it's broken down into different categories. We have general government, public safety, which is the police and stuff, public works, culture and recreation, community development, miscellaneous, and then transfers. And that's where, this year it's at zero. Last year, we would have transferred 306, or for 2017, we would have had above a $360,000 transfer into that EDA lease revenue, but because of that change, that no longer needs to be done. So if you look at, what does a property pay? And say, take that median home value of $162,700. They paid their, they wrote a check out to the city of St. Francis every month. They would pay us $62.96 for all the services. And that's broken down to the different categories, and I'll go through those. Like for general government, they would pay $13.14 a month. That includes every, you know, council, administration, finance, legal, all of that. They, you know, we manage a 10-plus million dollar budget. We manage an enforced code and city code. We coordinate the functions of all of the city council and all the commissions, and elections. And going over to safe, public safety, $27.83 a month. That's 24/7 police and fire response. That's all the calls for services. It's other services such as vehicle lockouts, home security checks, and drug drop off, and educational opportunities such as Eddie the Eagle and anti-bullying campaign. We then move over to streets and recycling. That would be $10.85 a month for all of your snow and ice removal, street patching and crack filling, street lighting, gravel road maintenance, tree trimming, and then recycle days. Parks and trails, $4.58 a month. That's all for doing everything for the playground equipment, the ball field maintenance, some building maintenance, crowns maintenance, parking lot maintenance, gating rings, trail maintenance. And then community development, $6.44, which is building infections, economic development, rental licensing, vacant miscellaneous permits. If you noticed online, the proposed budget is out there. Book is out on, underneath the finance department. It also includes the debt service funds and the capital equipment fund. It also includes the enterprise funds, which are water, wastewater, stormwater, and liquor. Those are all being approved tonight also. And once we get this all done, I'll work on the full budget book and get that all prepared in January, February, and also submit it to the GFOA. So, that's just my short presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, or try to answer them.
All right, any questions from council members at this time? I'm sure you've looked over the packets. I know I have.
So I just would request that you open up to the public, refer any input from the public.
All right, thank you, Darcy. And that's what I'm going to do at this particular time. I'll open this, I'll be public at, let me see here, at 6:16, I'll open the public. Anyone wish to discuss the budget? I'm going to say a couple things about it, just for public's sake here. As Darcy alluded to, we kept everything the same, the rates. The only benefit we have now is that it's a hot billing market right now. We're taking advantage of that. And as we were doing a work session on the budget, Mr. Bauer brought up something that I thought was very apropos, is that, you know, we're going to take that extra money, and we're going to put it to good use. Not frivolous spending, but we need, we need road improvement in this city. For a long time, it's been long overdue, underfunded, and there's other things that we've been needing that we have shortfalled on for a long time. So we're going to take that money, again, not spend it frivolously. We're going to spend it on things that the city's really been needing for quite a long time. So just to let the public know that. And as you saw in Darcy's presentation, the amount of money that actually comes to the city out of your taxes, you know, you, it ends up going to Anoka County first, then it goes to the ISD and the Bennett School District, and then it comes to us. So as you saw there, we get the bottom line of it, we don't get the top line. So I wish it was the other way around, but it's not. So just to let you know that. But the council and Darcy did a great job. We've been very frugal as far as looking at this, but then taking against, taking advantage of a market exposure out there. I'm sure that everybody's aware of how hard, how hot the market is right now. Doesn't mean it will be there next year, the year after, but we're going to take advantage of it this year. So I want to thank Darcy for her work on that. Thanks for the council and staff for doing their part of it. And if there's any other, any other input from the public at all? And I think I'll close this meeting at 6:18. Moving on to certify, so we want to certify the taxes payable. Is that what we want to do right at this point? All right, so do I have a motion to certify taxes payable 2018, resolution 2017-43? Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Bauer makes that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Buremark makes the second. Barring any further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion's passed. Oh, you do?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Again, I know how the council feels about this, as far as keeping the tax rate flat. This is kind of a departure on how we've presented this information in the past. In the past, it's been a percentage increase rather than a tax rate increase, and there is a difference in how it's presented. And, you know, I just looked at my own tax statement, and, you know, my market value did go up, and I know everybody's did, but if we would have went with like a tax levy percent, you know, I think we really needed to be a little bit more frugal. I believe what this tax levy increases is somewhere above a 7%, 7.5% for the increases of prior administrations. And I think that's a, quite a hefty tax levy increase, and we're just describing it a different way. It's the same money, keeping the tax rate flat, knowing that everybody's value goes up. So you actually get taxed at a higher rate as a percentage of the same money as we levied for last year. So there is a difference in how we explained it this year versus how we explained it last year. And I just, I know what I, in the past, I'm just not comfortable with that large of an increase. You know, I'm a little bit more conservative, but, you know, I respect your guys' decision.
Well, let me say to you that, you know, I can understand where you're coming from, but you know what I've seen in the past, I read all these packets before I became mayor? The lean and mean attitude of running the government. We've run this government lean and mean for well too long. Where you want, you want growth, you have to pay for growth. Growth doesn't come by a wish of a dreamer, a wave of a wand, and say, we're going to grow here and get 10,000 more residents here to help our tax base out. It doesn't happen. The website we just put in was to change to get communication from the public to us. Money, it costs, in business, you have to spend money to make money, and that's what we're doing here. We didn't do a 3% increase here. We did, we took advantage of market force out there, which every city's out there doing, just that. And again, we don't know what next year's going to bring. Going 18 to 19, we could go be into a recession. There's a lot of talk about that right now in the financial markets, worries about that. So I'm just saying to you, I understand where you're coming from, but at the same time, I also understand that the lean and mean has gotten us really nowhere. We've been working against ourselves, not forward. We have new developments coming in place for springtime, and we've got a community development director in the last two years that's actually done some work to do that. Before she came into effect, we had land that wasn't even planted out to sell. Now we have land planted that we can sell. So we're doing some good things with EDA and a bunch of other things. This is progress. Now, when I sat in that beaches out there in that audience for two years, I looked at a brochure when I first came in here, for, it said, it said, "45 and 85% hikes in rates, and pride, progress, and possibilities." For the first time in, since I came on board here after two years, we're actually putting some teeth behind those words. That's a good thing, not a bad thing. But does it cost to do that? Yeah, it does. The key is, like I said before, as I mentioned this to you earlier, is that how you spend the money. That's the key, is where to put it to get the bang for the buck. I hope the public understands that, and we're being as open and transparent as we possibly can at all ways. But we need to spend some money here to get the public what they want. How we spend that money is the key. That's my point here. So I understand what you're saying, but this is something that is a perfect situation, a perfect time to do it the right way, and every other city's doing just the same thing. And I'm not trying to follow other cities here, but I'm a very conservative person when it comes to budget. I know my numbers. This was a smart thing to do. I'll leave it at that. Any other discussion at all at this time?
I think we also had a deficit we had to make up for as well.
That's true.
And Paul came up with a really good plan for the roads. For all the roads, I believe it was in six years, and that's something that we have to fund. So that's something that I think we have to address as well. Without the money to do it, how are we going to get it done?
Right, well, one of the problems is when you, when you don't take on a problem and you ignore it, it only gets worse not then, and only costs more down the road. And that's one of the problems we're dealing with roads. And roads are not, and what, and believe me, with roads here in this city, and I'm sure, and our residents have driven their roads, they know what these roads look like as much as we do. So when you fix a road, in 10 years, you'll be back fixing that same road, it just continuously goes on and goes on. It's the same thing as the police, you know, watching people speed in certain areas. They go back, they, they get that taken care of for a while, and within a month or six weeks later, they're right back doing the same doggone thing. So, but you know, you know, government is, governing isn't easy, but there's decisions that have to be made. And it's time that the city stops running lean and mean. Do I think that we can cut down the road as we start growing and bring more revenue in, and look at our figures on a, on a regular basis? Of course we can. I'm not out to spend money just for spending money's sake, but I'm not out to cut that, cut spending, cut costs just for cost cutting's sake either. I'm for putting the bank where the buck is to get most, most of what the residents want in this city. That's what we're here for, to serve them, first, last, and always. Any further discussion?
My only question is, if there isn't any other discussion, are we clear? Did we actually have a vote?
I guess we should take it.
We had a first and a second.
We had a first and a second, so. So I will, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Four to one, motion passes, thank you. Okay, moving on to adopting a budget for 2018, resolution 2017-44. Do I have a motion to adopt that budget for 2018?
I would make that motion.
All right, Mr. Scordall makes that motion. Mr. Buremark makes that second. Any discussion before I go for a vote? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to new business. Ordinance 235, second series, amending section 2-9-1, fee schedule, second reading.
Colonel Mayor, members of the council, would you have a minute to amend the fee schedule of our broads to last meeting? If you have any questions, we'll answer them. Kate is here today, her department, so.
That's all? Oh, has to take a sip. All right, this is the second reading. We've already discussed it. Do I have any other discussion that pertained to this? By the way, this is an ordinance, I'm going to do a roll call. I'm learning here as much as I can. So Barb, you do a roll call, please?
First, we need a motion.
Oh, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. Devine makes the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Bauer makes a second. Now can we have a roll call?
Joe Mielbauer.
Aye.
Feldman.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Scordall.
Aye.
Devine.
Aye.
Moving on, item B, summary publication of ordinance 235, second series, resolution 2017-45.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we authorize a summary publication of those ordinance.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Buremark makes a second. Any discussion? Do we have a roll call for that one too? Nope? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item C, authorization to purchase 2018 squad car. Chief, could I leave your input on that one?
Uh, this is the mayor council, this is the routine replacement of our squad cars every four years. By replacing every four years, we can keep the maintenance costs down, and our retail, our trade-in value's up.
You know, the one question I have is, explain this to me, and I don't understand it's budgeted in your Planet Software, you know, so I understand that, but, you know, so you're getting, you're ordering one, you ordered advanced to get it down the road, so you're doing one now, and, and.
Two now.
Two now.
Two now for 2018.
But the trade-in, so how, so you're ordering it now to come in '19 or '18?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. And then the trade-in does.
What I didn't understand when I was reading my packet is it says, with the anticipated trade-in of two marked squad cars in 2019.
Yeah, I tried to spell it out why we were ordering two this year. We're anticipating losing our Tahoe in 2019. So to kind of balance it out, instead of ordering a lot of three or four squad cars in 2019, we're going to order two this year in anticipation of losing that Tahoe in 2019, and also we're going to be trading in two additional squad cars that year as well.
And then one trade-in will be used against one of the.
In 2018, yes.
And again, this is a budgeted item, this plan for.
It's capital improvement.
Capital improvement, okay. All right, let me ask, any discussion here? Mr. Scordall, Rich?
Nope, I mean, this is in the plan.
It's in the plan. And by the way, just to let the public know, we incorporated a new software program called Planet Software for capital expenses, just like this. We're going out as far as 10 years on our, on our equipment and that. This was the first year that we're putting this into effect, and I look forward to it. It's something that, you know, many cities have us around us. Cambridge is the one that I got it from, and then we bought the software and put it into effect, and staff did a great job putting and implementing it. Each year, we'll get it a little better and better as we go on. But this gives us an idea of where to put our dollars to use, and what we can hold off on, and what we need to buy currently, and keep, and like the chief said, trade-in value's a big deal. So we want to keep on top of this stuff. So Rob, anything from you?
Nope, it's in the plan.
Okay. Joe?
No.
Jerry?
No.
Okay. Barring any further discussion, do I have a motion to authorize the purchase of a 2018 squad car? I will make that motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that second.
All right, Mr. Devine makes that second. Barring any further discussion, all in favor say aye.
If there is, you know, it's, it's very important to point out that how these contracts works with the state bids, that every city in the, in the state can, can, these dealerships are asked to submit a bid on what their lowest price is going to be for a particular car, all set up in a certain way. And then they get better pricing because they can order Udo low. And then they would sell those to the cities. So it's actually a good deal with the state bid. You know, cities can pick up a, you know, a squad car for one, you know, or 75% of what the price of a regular car is to us. So it's actually a really good deal. If the city would actually turn over our squad cars every year, I think we could probably make some money on it, reselling them, but as it's kind of frowned upon, you know, but it's, it's a good deal. It really is.
Right, and let's just explain the state pricing to the public here. What that's saying is, the public says, like, for instance, I'm just going to throw out a figure, but they'll say that the market may be selling that car for $17,000, the state will say $15,000. And if that dealership wants to deal with the municipalities, they have to sell it for $15,000. That's what Mr. Vay's saying. So it is a good thing all the way around, and we use that for a lot of equipment. You know, for other stuff that we're looking at for Public Works, whatever, we always check the state bid prices always, to make sure we're getting the best price for the public.
And that would be computer equipment?
Everything.
Everything.
Everything we can, everything we can. So, a very good point brought up, I'm glad you did. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I think when you made your motion, I think you made it singular, just a squad, you want to purchase two, right?
But I'm just reading off what it says here, though, so it says to purchase 2018 squad cars, so am I got that wrong, or?
It's actually for two squad cars.
Two, okay.
That's what's in the capital.
Okay, so it's, okay, so I'll just word that in. Thank you, Rich.
Just a quick question, so you said every four years we typically replace them?
We found every four years we can keep the mileage typically under 100,000 at trade-in time, and that really keeps our trade-in values pretty consistent, so we kind of know where we're going to be at that time. Going another year or two with the squad cars, you know, we've been there, about 10 years ago, we used to have just a couple of squad cars, and our maintenance costs were through the roof. I mean, they were constantly in the shop. I mean, these cars are driven pretty hard for what they are, so. And our fleet of seven Mark squad cars is sufficient right now, and that's, we're basing everything on keeping that Mark squad car count at seven and keeping them for four years, what typically keeps us under 100,000 at trade-in times.
And the Tahoe will stay and just be used by other...
The Tahoe, no, remain in the city, but just won't be used for the next use.
Okay, well, I'm going to clarify that. Any other discussion?
Will there be a, what, is that going to be an additional vehicle to city, or will it be replacing a city vehicle like the Ford Escape that the building material uses?
Um, that I'm not 100% sure on. I know there's probably one that's coming to the end of life, which could be the...
And I don't think that...
...Victoria is pretty old, but...
I think the Escape is probably getting up there to five years, six years now.
The one that Public Works has?
Um, it's, yeah, and I think the building department was using it for inspections, and then I think Public Works also used that as a Ford Escape.
Because inspection has their own.
Okay.
All right, so let me, is anything else?
No, that was, I was just curious.
No, okay. All right, let me reword that for a new motion here. Authorization to Purchase Two 2018 Squad Cars, correct?
Correct.
Okay, do I have a motion? I'll make that motion as I did the first time, second?
Well, who made the original motion?
I did, but Rich pointed out that it was wrong because it was singular and not plural.
Then you would have made the original motion, whoever, who seconded that?
We didn't give it a second because, I don't think we did, did we?
Jerry.
Okay, then if I second it, then I'll, you know, I'll amend my second.
We'll get this right. Okay, you're going to take the second?
Yep.
Okay, all right, so once again, it's to authorize a purchase of two 2018 squad cars. I have a first and I have a second. All favor say aye?
Aye.
All aye? Motion passes. I like this informal way that we do this, as we're not perfect by any stretch of imagination, at least I'm not. Anyways, moving on to item D, Cost of Living Adjustment COLA for Non-Union City Employees for 2018, Resolution 2017-46. All right, anything for you, John?
Mayor, Members of the Council, pardon me, there's a consideration for a 3% cost of living adjustment for all non-union employees. This would be consistent with the contract that was ratified by the Public Works Union. So it's up to your, for your consideration tonight, just know that includes all non-union employees. There's no resolution, it's just a simple motion.
Okay, just a motion, approve it? Okay, Rich, I'm open discussion on your end, anything?
No, we kind of set the precedence with one of the unions, and I think it's only fair to go along and extend it to these other employees, on my favor.
Okay. Rob?
I just want to let the public know that, you know, I oppose the 3% cost of living across the board for the city, just based on our residents, so, but I am being fair about this resolution because we already have employees that have been set at 3%, so that's where I stand.
Joe?
Like I say, with the union stuff, to me, 3% was pretty standard, and I don't see an issue with it at all.
Jerry?
I concur with the council, you know, when we authorize our, you know, the union employees get a 3% raise, I think we're going to be hard pressed to tell the non-union employees they're not worth 3%.
And I'll go a little farther to say, you know, we, we, right now, since we've come into office, have worked really well with the staff that's been here before, and the staff, to me, has blossomed really well. They had ideas here, they weren't being heard that well before, now they are, but I have a real coercive attitude, is that the right word here, trying to work together here like this? So I feel really good with this, and, you know, once again, as I mentioned before, you have to pay to get. You want to keep a staff like this in place, you have to, you have to keep them wanting to be here, and this 3% to me is not aligned by any stretch of imagination, so I think the public would have to agree with that, too. I mean, you know, the public doesn't see us on a one-on-one basis, but they see the staff on a one-on-one basis, so when you have a problem, you're calling the staff up. I like what I see with the police lately, with the community, you know, community attitude that the chief's brought with that, and that's your full strength in the first time in a couple of years. The new chief for the fire, you know, Fire Chief Schmidt, I like what he's doing there. I like Public Works, what's being done there, especially taking out the ways of achievement. So I think we are going the right direction, and I think, I think to maintain that, we have to give something out to keep those employees here, so I think it's a good idea. So, to me, you want to entertain a motion at this time? So do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have one more.
Okay, go for it.
Are we extending this for the three years that we extended to the previous union employees?
Does it mean a one year?
One year. Okay, so there's a question, if the Public Works ones were three years, why is this one year?
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, because the council has discretion with the non-union members, as opposed to having a union contract with a definite settlement, and so what you voted on last time with Public Works was a 43-year deal, but each year, non-union is going to come back to the council.
Okay, all right, can I answer your question? So I have a motion to approve, is that what I want to do? A motion to approve a cost of living adjustment COLA for non-union city employees for 2018, Resolution 2017-46. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Vay makes the motion, do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
All right, Mr. Squirtle makes a second, do I have to vote on this, or do we take a vote? All right, and all favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. All right, moving on to item E, Verizon Wireless Conditional Use Permits/Interim Use Permits, Resolution 2017-47. Is that Ben?
That's me. Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, 49 is a CUP and IUP request from Verizon, as the mayor stated. They're proposing to construct a 100-foot-tall tower, it would be to the southwest of Hillendale Drive and Perry Olick Street, that would be a CUP enforcement request. And then the requested interim use permit is needed to allow the tower to exceed the 75-foot height maximum code, and that's something that's specifically allowed within your code. Parcel is over 26 acres in size, it's Zone A2, which does allow for these types of facilities by additional use permit. You'll see on page two of the report, we provide you the site identification map, because this is an unaddressed parcel, so you can see exactly where that's at. Clickable definitions are on page three, clickable codes are on pages three and four, and at the bottom of page four, you're going to see that we make a note regarding Section 332 Sub C 7 of the Communications Act. That act does preserve your local authority over these types of facilities, but it does set some specific limitations on those authorities. Specifically, it does preempt cities from denying these types of applications based on the environmental effects of radio frequency transmissions. Moving on to the city's cell tower performance standards on page five, you're going to see that there are nine specific standards that need to be met according to our code, and both staff and the planning commission felt that these were all met or could be met with conditions. The general standards can all be met with conditions, the proposed height and location were shown to be justified by the provided engineering study that was reviewed by HAA. Co-location opportunities are going to be provided, up to two additional companies can locate on this tower. The required letter from the property owner and signed lease were provided, the tower is meeting required setbacks, and the ground-mounted equipment is going to be placed within what's termed an architecturally appropriate building that will house the equipment. It's going to be surrounded by an eight-foot-high security fence, they're going to have to have screening slats in that fence to screen that equipment, and then also provide landscaping around that to just provide some buffering. Regarding the IUP specifically, that requested height, as I stated earlier, has been justified by the engineering study that was provided, and all minor requirements can be met with conditions. Moving on to pages 10 and 11 of the report, that's where you'll see our general overall CUP and IUP standards, and again, there both staff and the planning commission felt all the criteria were met. We did hold two public hearings on this, because we held one for the CUP and then an additional one for the IUP. The main concerns were about location, why didn't they move it to a different portion of this 26-acre property? To that, the applicant basically indicated topography, a little bit farther to the west of where it's currently located. It goes up a hill, and winter conditions, just overall maintenance for the tower that posed some problems for them. And then that was also the agreed-upon lease area with this particular property owner. The other concern that was really focused on aesthetics, the fact that towers just aren't necessarily considered the best-looking things, but to that, I would say our code doesn't necessarily regulate that. Our code is set up to limit the overall number of towers and to limit those types of disruptions throughout our community. So these can be located as long as we have the study to show that it's necessary, and that's what has been provided by this act. So inclusion, Verizon is here tonight requesting a conditional use permit and an interim use permit to allow this tower, where we've discussed, both staff and the planning commission are recommending approval of the CUP and the IUP with the conditions listed in the report. Council tonight may approve, you may deny, or you may table this request. We have until early January to make a final decision on this application. We provide template motions for this on page 13 of the report, suggested findings of fact are listed on pages 13 and 14, and then you'll see our recommended conditions on pages 14 through 16. That'll turn over for questions.
Well, the main, one question I have here is, the individual resident that had a concern, has that been addressed, then?
It was addressed in terms of, the concern was the location, how is it going to look from the neighbor's property? Because it is, it's right at the setback essentially, and it's fairly near to where he's developed portions of his property. Ultimately, what Verizon did, they came back with a picture, they took a photo on his property and showed what it looks like now, what it will look like in the after. But again, there isn't necessarily an aesthetic requirement to our code, it's more about location and height, and whether it's justified by the engineering studies, so.
Did that pacify this individual, then, or?
I wouldn't say he was necessarily happy. I mean, I think anybody that sees one of these coming next to them is going to question, well, why can't it be somewhere else? And that's just the honest response most residents are going to have. I would say the way that we're trying to address that is the fact that the equipment isn't going to be allowed to just be outside, it's going to be in the aesthetically hopefully nice enclosure, it's going to be surrounded by the fence, and we're requiring landscaping around that, but there's really nothing we can do to stop the visual...
Right, 109 feet tall, but, but, and let me ask you this, then, then, I would take it that the owner of the property is being leased from him?
Correct.
And so, is there any benefit to the city other than to an increase of property tax because of that, or am I...
Well, the benefit to the city, I would say, would be from an emergency services standpoint, just improving cellular service in the western portion of the community. We did have a number of speakers at the public hearings stating that they have terrible cell service out there, and that they really want to see something happen in that direction. And I would think from fire, safety, just people being able to contact our emergency services and a reliable manager's community.
And this, I take it, was the best location for serviceability and for the actual, you know, for what they want to get out of it, for reception and that?
Yeah, they do an overall RF study to see, you know, where are they weakening their signals, and where can they place a single tower? Because they don't want to go investing in towers all over communities either, so what makes the most sense in terms of where all their other towers are, and what's going to strengthen their overall...
Well, let me just, and I'm just asking a question in general here, I mean, because I know the gentleman owns the property, but, so I don't hear about this later on, because when you have a vacant property, you pay less in tax, when you have something on the property, you pay more in tax. Will this affect him in that way?
That, I would have to leave to your assessment.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm just letting Ray, who's in the audience now, as I see here, it's your property, so there may be an adjustment or something, I'm not sure there will be, but you are putting something on that wasn't there, so how the county assesses that, I don't know.
I don't know.
But it's out of our hands, so I guess I'm putting it like that, it's out of the city's hands. I, step up?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, my name is Eddie Boulon, here representing Verizon Wireless, and as part of the lease we have with Mr. Jones, there is a section that if his taxes increase because of this installation, we will reimburse him for any increase in that property tax. That was addressed in the lease we have.
All right, that's what I wanted to hear, that's what I wanted, just to clarify with him, okay, thank you. Because I know, otherwise I will get a call. All right, I'm going to open this for discussion, Rich, I'll start with you.
Okay. Well, I guess I was there for both public hearings, and your question about was the concern of the citizen addressed, excuse me, and no, it definitely was not. And I don't know if there's a, there wouldn't have been a different way to do this process, I don't think, but there were a couple people, you know, there was, I guess, the property owner, you know, this property, you know, is out west here, and it's a, basically, right now, it's just a hay field, right, understand it, right? And it kind of runs east and west, longer east and west than, north and south than is east and west. And they're putting it on the far south end, so if you go down Perry Olick and you turn in on the very south end of the property, they're basically running maybe 150 feet off the road, give or take, I mean, not very far off the road, but it ends up being right the road, give or take, I mean, not very far off the road, but it ends up being right next to this gentleman's shed, or it's more than just a shed, it, you know, his accessory building. You could have gone further west, and yet you go up a little bit, it's kind of a terrace field. If they would have gone more towards the southwest corner, it would not have been right next to this gentleman's building. But I also understand, you know, and then when things like this are brought up, Verizon says, well, if we're going to make a change, it's going to delay the process by at least a year. And I think some folks were wondering, well, why are we just now hearing about this at, you know, this public hearing stage when Verizon's so far down the path? But I also find it reasonable to think that before Verizon could ever come here, there's a lot of hoops they have to jump through before they can come here to get, you know, whatever kind of approval it is for environmental, all the other kind of stuff they have to do before they come here. So once they're through that whole process and they've selected this site, then they come and do the public hearings. I don't know if there would have been some informal thing where they could have maybe gotten the neighbor's feedback before they did this. I wish they would have gone further west because it is right next to this gentleman's building. I think he's going to learn to live with it, just like all of us learn to live with water towers and everything else. It is needed in that part of the city, there's no doubt about it. You know, but especially, and I'm glad, and this is a good use for that property, I mean, Mr. Jones might do something with it someday, he might not, but I think, you know, by having this arrangement, Verizon is going to provide a valuable service to the citizens in this city. And like the gentleman mentioned to us in the public hearing, not only does it just increase service there, it also offloads some of the, what other towers in the city are having to carry. So it ends up benefiting a lot of people by doing this. I think it's needed, but I do wish there was a little bit better, I don't know if it's a better process, but, I mean, Verizon was in the rights to do what they did. I wish they would have moved a little bit further west, right, not right next to the neighbor. But I, and I think, and the planning zoning commission did a very good job, I want to commend them on what they did in their public hearings. It's not an easy thing to do, but I think they all kind of recognized that there really wasn't, if they would have responded to the resident and then said, well, because that gentleman's not happy, we're going to deny this, you would not have a footing to stand on when it comes to statements of findings. And I think they did a very good job of, you know, gathering the public's input and making what they felt was the right decision. So that's what you see in the packet. So from my standpoint, you know, I wish it would have been done a little bit differently, but I think it's a good use for that property. I think it's a good service that's needed in the city, so I'm all for it.
So would you say in your opinion that the positive end outweighs the negative end?
Well, you know, and we don't have to make these decisions very often. And then there's one other resident that lives, I think, across the street on very light, whose picture window looks right where that thing's going to be. You know, just by, you know, by chance. If they would, now if they would have put the tower a little bit to the north, it would not be right near her picture window. You know, it's, you know, I think it's a valuable service, and those two residents, and I don't know if they're really inconvenienced that much. You know, it's more of an aesthetic thing, I, you know, time will tell, but I, willing to bet, it's probably not going to decrease property values. You know, I, I do think it's a service, and it's not a city service either, you know, we have a commercial entity coming in here and doing this, and I think it's going to benefit more folks than what the couple of residents perhaps might, you know, take some time to get used to. I think they're going to get used to it, but just out of the chute, it might be, might have, they might think that's an eyesore, but I think that'll probably go away over time.
It's one of the, it's like a, you know, when you're growing and things are changing, it's like a double-edged sword. There's a positive and a negative, like to anything. So someone's going to get a negative, have a negative attitude towards it, but then you look at the majority of it, and with the communication ability and all that, that's going to be a big help. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Anything else from here?
No.
Okay, Rob?
My question, I guess, is for Verizon, and maybe, was the two additional positions on the pole, is that for, let's say, for an example, Sprint to come in, or other services that we could schmooze to better facilitate our city residents that don't only have Verizon?
Yep, the other spots in the tower are open to any carrier or communication entity that wants to get equipment on it. You know, it's more than likely that it would be a Sprint or AT&amp;T or a wireless carrier. There are some radio communication companies that utilize towers and water towers as well, but it's an open co-location to any home of interest in the space for Verizon.
And let me ask you, you know, upon approval here tonight, when are you looking to have this up and running?
I'm not privy to the Verizon construction schedule. Typically, it'll get built within a year of zoning approval, unless we get through the building permit process with the city and get the general contractor selected, they usually start construction. But generally, it's within a year of zoning approval, but it's, we're not privy to that side of the business.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, Frank?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
On a commercial, the coverage is all red, already, so. No, I think, I think if, I mean, if it's going to benefit more residents, I think it's a good thing. As much as I wouldn't want to look out and see a tower in front of my house, I, if it's not my property, I don't think I necessarily have much say in that. So, it's unfortunate, and I think it sucks for those people, and I, you know, I feel for them because I wouldn't want to look at it, but at the same time, it's somebody else's property. So, I think if it's going to benefit people, then it's a good thing.
Sure.
I think we're kind of hard-pressed to tell people what citizens can utilize their property for, what, you know, I think that goes to private property rights. And if this falls within our code, which it certainly does, the way I'm reading this is we've got no choice but to approve it, and if we deny it, we wouldn't have any standing to deny it, because everything falls within, within our code. So, you know, I'm in favor of this, some people might not like it, but, and if we're really not in favor of this, then I think we, maybe we ought to go back and rebook out the code to find out what, what we need to change so this doesn't happen in the future. But as it stands right now, I, I think it's a private property rights. And if Mr. Jones wants to lease his property to Verizon and they put up this tower and, and it falls within our guidelines, then there's nothing we can do about it.
Right, and I'd like to ask Dave something here, if I, if I'm under the right assumption here. By state law, a conditional use permit, they meet all requirements. We can't really deny it, can we?
Unless you have some reason to do so.
Right, yeah, we have some reason.
And that would be something that would come out of the staff report.
Yeah, which, at this particular time, I don't see any myself, so. I agree, and like I said earlier, this is one of those double-edged swords, you're going to, you're going to look at it and see you're going to benefit some people, and then you're going to not benefit other people. So, I think you have to look at it on a twin-beam scale and see what the majority is, is it more positive than is negative? Sounds like to me it's more positive than negative. So, I want to thank you for all the input from the council on this, and Ben and Sam Batek for your work on it. At this particular time, I'm going to entertain a motion for Verizon Wireless Conditional Use Permit/Intrim Use Permit Resolution 2017-47. Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Brown makes that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Brown makes that second. Any further discussion? Or take the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Very much, Paul, prepared for Verizon.
Okay, moving on to item F, Ordinance 236, Second Series Amending Regulation of Peddlers, Solicitors, and Transit Merchants. This is a first reading.
I'm aware, from the city council, yes, Ordinance 236, bringing my first reading is intended to fill a gap in our code related to peddlers, solicitors, canvassers, and transient merchants. Historically, the city has always required licenses for these types of businesses, but our current city code is very short on the details in terms of how the license process should actually function. It simply says that a license is required, and city staff has basically been left to determine what that means, and they operate it under their own process. This ordinance is going to correct that oversight by establishing a solid framework on who needs the license, what must be in the application, what are the grounds for denial. It aligns the general standards of conduct for solicitors and sets up a formal process for suspension or revocation of issued licenses. Put another way, this ordinance is just going to codify that the city has already been operating for years, and it's going to fill in some of the identified gaps in the current language. Let's council with, like myself, Kate, who walked through this language here tonight. We're seeking your approval to move this forward to your next meeting for a second.
All right. Well, what I like about this myself is, and I'm going to read the purpose here to the public. "The general rationale for establishing an ordinance to regulate peddlers, solicitors, and transit merchants is to provide a reasonable amount of oversight by the city to ensure that its residents are protected from unregulated commerce of a temporary or transit nature. Regulations in the draft ordinance include application and review procedures, eligibility standards, enforcement, and revocation procedures. Together, these regulations are designed to protect the public's health, safety, and general welfare, including protecting the privacy of residents and preventing fraud and other criminal activities." I think that's a very good thing, myself, especially in today's electronic age. And you don't know who's coming to your door, so we need to have some oversight and some teeth and where we can do something about it, and I think that's a good idea, and I hope that's the full intent of this. So I'm going to open up for discussion, Jerry, I'll start with you.
No, I think this is just a general housekeeping with our ordinances. When we hired Sam Batek, you know, it was really clear that we had some gaps in some of our coding and ordinances, and this is, this is one of the examples of that. Says we need a license, it doesn't say, you know, how to get that license, how to revoke that license, and what the process is. So I think spelling it out does a lot of things. Number one, it makes it easier for a vendor to come into our life, our, our city to sell things, because now they know exactly what to do, how to do it, and who to do it with.
And what's expected of them.
Yep, what's expected and, and all that. And it also keeps some of the unwanted people out, maybe these fly-by-night operations that perhaps maybe don't want to, you know, jump through all the hoops to get a license. And, and it would make it easier to try to weed those people out. Now, by definition, you know, they, you know, if they want to operate shady business, they don't have a license, you know, they, they might not jump through all the hoops, but at least if, if they come to your door and if they're not displaying their, their proper credentials, then you can call the police and then they, we could deal with them.
Exactly, exactly, good point. Anything else? That's good.
Yep, that has everything.
All right, Joe?
I would pretty much echo what Jerry said, and thanks to Kate and Sam Batek for getting everything done. Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, Joe, and Rob, right?
I missed my question on, on the licensing about, you know, every time there's a storm, there's these people that I walk through and ask, hey, you need home repair or whatever. How do these people know to go to the city now that we're going to change the ordinance? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, our ordinance actually has said a license is required, it just hasn't spelled out the process. So those people ostensibly aren't, have been coming to the city, and if they do that in multiple communities, they just know that that's what they have to do.
Somebody would have to call though.
So you just general require, they have to check, get a license, or-
The way you're, what really was done here is just taken out of section eight, put it into section six, and clarified more in section six.
Providing specificity, yeah.
Yeah, so that takes, it takes out that vagueness out of it.
Yep.
Okay. Okay with you?
Yep.
All right, Rich?
I think it's a good idea. I guess I never knew that somebody that was coming to my door to try to sell me on recent loans of my house should have a city-issued photo ID.
Lanyard.
I never knew that. That might be one of those interesting things to put in the city newsletter under the, did you know?
Yeah.
Thing that I've been asking about for a few, a few months. Well, I never knew that. And how does somebody, I bet you 99% of the people in the city don't know that there is a process to make sure that the people that are coming to their door are legit.
Yeah.
And if they don't want to show you an ID, well, then, just get up the phone and make a phone call, and maybe some of those folks won't be coming around, but I never knew that.
Well, and just to add to that, I mean, I lived in Andover 2005, and when there was a tornado that went through there, and I can tell you that there was, everybody was a siding person, or a roofing person, or something like this, and they were out everywhere. I mean, it was like roves of them, so to have some kind of control, regulation, or ability to check them out to make sure they are legitimate is a good thing, not a bad thing. So, I agree with you 100% on that, so.
So I'm all for it.
Okay. All right, so, go ahead.
How would this affect the football booster club? You know, are they going to be exempt from this? Okay, because I just want to make sure that Girl Scouts sell cookies, I get all kinds of the football booster clubs, the band, and, you know.
I believe, I believe canvassing is exempt.
Raise funds for their, their events, but-
A whole list of exceptions, and this proposed 614-3, sub A is all exceptions. And we have 1 through 12, which does include schoolchildren, age 17 and under, soliciting for school sponsors.
Page five is-
Okay, good, good. Good, I just wanted to make sure that, that we're not-
Joe, over with?
-limiting kids.
Yeah, well, good point. That was already covered, and that's good. I want to tell you, good job, Ben, good Sam Batek and Kate, I think it's a good thing to do, and not overdo. Clarification is always a good thing, not best. All right, so on that, I will entertain a motion to approve, a motion first, then we'll go to roll call. Ordinance 236, let's see, I want to get this right, 236, Second Series Amending Regulation of Peddlers, Solicitors, Transit Merchants, the first reading. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion on that, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Tuvay makes the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Brown makes the second. We'll take a roll call on this. Barb?
Feldman.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Tordog.
Aye.
Tuvay.
Aye.
Miel Moll.
Aye.
5-0.
All right, good, thank you. Okay. All right, moving on to item G, Rum River Bluff Second Edition, Acceptance of City Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is, this includes the improvements, the public improvements for Rum River Bluff Second Edition. Those improvements were recently completed, so at this time, the developers are requesting acceptance of those improvements. As you may know, this also includes improvements to Rum River Boulevard and 237th Avenue, which has actually been around since the first edition of this plat, it's actually in that developer's agreement. To date, it hasn't been done, but to, there is a plan now that's in concept approved by the county, and that's included in your packet. In general, it includes right-turn lanes and opposing lefts, and of course, two-through lanes. So to ensure that's built next year, we're recommending a letter of credit of $232,500 remain in place. So with that, staff recommends that the city council accept the improvements as presented.
Okay. I'll open this up for discussion, Joe, I'll start with you.
Has that been budgeted for, or is that something that we planned for?
That's all developers' money.
Oh, no, I don't have anything.
Okay.
Rob? Well, I look at this, I wish, you know, hindsight 2020, that's right by where the school put in the turn lane. This has all been resurfaced within the last couple months. You know, it just bothers me that we couldn't coordinate with ISD-15 and get this done all at once, quit spending the taxpayers' money frivolously, it just drives me crazy. Work with the school, maybe push it over instead of taking private property land because the school wanted to have a turn lane, we could have worked with the school to push that east instead of taking private citizens' land. It just, it's a bad decision over a bad decision. I know it needs to be done, but I hate being the one to tell a private citizen that we're going to take his land because we made a bad decision with the ISD-15 on a road improvement. It just burns me up, that's all I have.
Okay, Rich?
No, I have any other questions or comments? We ought to go forward, please.
And Jerry? Just to attach something to what Rob said, I agree with you 100%. I think we've, I think at this particular point in time, after being in office 11 months now, I think ISD-15 knows exactly where this council's coming from. So I would behoove, as I've told them in past meetings and that, don't put the cart before the ox and put us in a situation like this again, which we discussed before. So, it's been done, we can't take it back now, but I'm, again, I'm completely in your mindset about, should they do that again and come forth like this and cause this type of grief and all that, they probably get a denial before they get acceptance, at least in my opinion. So, we'll have to leave it at that, it's already been done. But Craig, let me just ask you, is everything, all the requirements and everything been set, met here?
Correct, other than the county improvements.
Right.
And the developer's agreement is specific that as long as they satisfy the county, and that's what these plans, sets are working towards, they build that, and they're, are complete with all the requirements.
Okay, all right. All right, well then, on that, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve Rum River Bluff Second Edition, Acceptance of the City Infrastructure.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Boulon makes that motion, do I have a second? I'll make that second. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Craig.
Mr. Mayor, you need to repeat the opposedes, please.
Oh, do I? I thought I did, okay, I then.
Opposed.
All right, okay. Do I need the what now?
Those opposed, I didn't vote.
Oh, you didn't? Oh, you didn't, okay. All right, then, all, any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so, all right, motion passes, word over. Thank you for clarifying that with me. Okay, moving on to Smith Lake Wildlife Estates 1 and 2 additions, first and second addition, rather, Acceptance of Improvements. Craig, Ben?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this item's a little different. This plat started in 2005, with the economic downturn, it kind of stalled for a number of years, then back in 2013, the city came to an agreement with the developer and Village Bank, basically, to resurrect this. And in summary, the agreement included allowing building permits if they put in a certain amount of money for each building permit to put the final, the two most course on the plat. So that's gone on since 2013. They actually do have until next year to complete it, but they are complete at this time. So the amended developer's agreement indicates that the city to release the letter of credit that they have remaining at the city. The only thing left, they did shoulder, but of course, it's not the time of year for the city to release the letter of credit that they have remaining at the city. The only thing left, they did shoulder, but of course, it's not the time of year for seed to germinate, so we're recommending holding ten thousand dollars for that. With that, staff recommends that city council accept the improvements as presented.
All right, that amount is sufficient then, I take it?
Correct.
So basically, you're asking for us to accept it to get the release of the letter of credit from the bank?
Correct. They had a little, few, some more funds than was needed to complete the improvements.
Open for discussion here, Joe? Anything? Jerry?
No, it's fairly standard, you know. They need, you know, to keep roughly ten thousand dollars in there to finish the work, so we want to make sure that it's not staying there in case it don't finish, we can do it. So it's fairly standard.
Bob?
I don't have anything on this one.
All right, Rich?
Nope, and I would make a motion that we accept the improvements to Smith Lake Wildlife Estates.
I'm taking my words right out of, thank you.
Open me up, open me up, Mr. Mayor.
I like when I'm corrected. That's fine.
I'll make that second.
All right, and so, guys throwing me off here, but screw up this one. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, I did that one right. Thank you. All right, moving on to North Metro Regional Street Maintenance Consortium, Resolution two thousand and seventeen dash forty-eight.
Mayor, council, and your package tonight for your consideration is authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to sign the JPA and then also approve a resolution associated with that. This is a collaboration between about thirteen North Metro cities to try and get better pricing for various routine street maintenance activities. So we're looking to just join this group and try and get some better pricing on some of our projects that we have coming up. We'll utilize this to work through our maintenance plan for all of our street maintenance needs and just kind of move with the group to get better pricing. I can answer any questions.
This would be like for seal coating, crack filling?
Seal coating, crack filling, pavement markings, fog sealing, those type of routine maintenance activities. It sounds like this year, they're going to remove street sweeping from the bid processing and then also small parking lot striping. The pricing doesn't make sense when there's such small quantities on that. So they're looking at pulling that out and that's based on a meeting that we just had here.
But I would imagine if that changed, they would readjust it or something.
Right, right. The group does a yearly review, what worked, what didn't work, and this is the result of that meeting, what worked and what didn't work, and they'll adjust accordingly, accordingly each year.
Just for the public's knowledge on this, Mr. Muehlbauer and myself attended a League of Minnesota Cities seminar when we first got elected and we met council members, newly elected council members from Coon Rapids who heads this, and we thought it was a great idea. Something that we ran on, which was when, when, when we can meet, when we can partner with other cities in meeting for services that we have that meets or exceeds what we have in play at a lower cost is something we should consider. So that's what, we took that attitude through our campaign and what we were going to do for the public as far as, like I say again, a service that's out there where you can meet or exceed it and you can save costs at it, we should investigate that. This came to our attention at a League of Minnesota Cities seminar, as I mentioned. We talked to the council members, we pursued it with that, got Paul on board with it and brought it to our, brought to the council that. I think it's a good idea now. It's kind of the same thing about when your neighborhood during the summertime, you'll see someone come by, a company that will do seal coating for your driveways and ask all the neighbors to sign up to give you a reduction in price. It's this volume basis, but this has been going on. We are now going to be the thirteenth city in it. It's been going on for quite a long time. I think as far back as what, two thousand and one or two thousand and five, I believe it is, but anyways.
Two thousand and four.
Four, is it? Okay, so four. So now we are, it'll be thirteen total cities, but I think it's a good savings. I think it's been run really well by Coon Rapids and there's just some administrative costs that are minimal, but I think it's a good opportunity for us to save some money and get our maintenance up to par. So on that, I will ask for any discussion. Rich at all?
Well, when we do something like this, are we, in order for this to work, the suppliers got to have some known statement of work to go bid to. Do we, do we have any kind of commitment to this consortium that we're going to, we're going to procure twelve miles of seal coated roads this year? Or how, how do they plan for, I guess, our needs? Or are we making some assumptions that we're bringing so many needs to the party? And if we, if those don't come to fruition, is there a penalty for us? Or they must have some, I don't know how you bid across thirteen cities unless they're all going to commit to do something. Otherwise, the city Coon Rapids ends up holding the bag or how is that going to work if it would not be a detriment to us? That's kind of where I'm going.
Mayor, council member, as far as I know, we're not obligated to pay for anything through the bidding process. Once we're through the bidding process and commit or sign an agreement with that, whomever is awarded that contract, that's, that's when we are starting, starting to be obligated for payment. Right now, we work through that bidding process. We give Coon Rapids our quantities. They put together the numbers. They solicit bids and then come back and the decision is made from there. Our engineer might have a little bit more experience working with the group than I have.
Yeah, like Paul had said, you basically put together simple maps with your quantities, submit that, they take the bids, but I also am not sure what happens if you completely back out. I would assume nothing, but it is a well-defined quantities though, of all the cities and the appendices of the spec, each city outlines what they want and that's what they bid on. So if they lose five percent of that, I don't think it really matters to me.
Is it your, your?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think I read something here that says we're not obligated, that we can't, we don't have to be part of it. We decide we don't want to be, I mean, as far as that particular project or whatever.
Right. Mayor, council, we would be submitting our quantities, seeing what the pricing comes in at, and then we would come before council again to see if you want to move forward with, with the projects, just like we would be doing if we were doing the project ourselves. It's just that we might be able to take advantage of that volume.
So basically, it's to get the best price out there for what we do. Now, after that, you know, so in other words, like what Craig says, we take our road maintenance center, put it in there with theirs, all these other cities, and then they get a better price for it, then we break it down from there. As far as like, well, we're going to pay the dollar amount we're going to pay, then it decides if we want to go ahead with it or pull out that project for this year.
Right.
And as was mentioned here, this is a contract renewable every year? Is that what it is or?
Whatever work needs to be done has to be approved or signed.
Right. But is this joint power agreement, for how long is this in effect?
The joint power, I think, stays in effect for however long we want to stay a part of it.
Okay.
And then we are submitting our quantities accordingly from there. You know, if we decide that this is not something that we want to be a part of after the first year or after the second year, I'm sure there are ways that we can get out of that JPA so that we don't have to continue to vote.
Well, I think that's in there too, by the way. Okay.
But it's publicly bid every year. It's, every year it's a separate project.
Right, for projects, but well, we're joining the joint power agreement. We can get in it and we can get out of it.
You just want to submit it in quantities.
All right. Rob, you anything to say?
Yeah, I just want to understand. So the seal coating and the road repair stuff that we're talking about in the five-year plan or six-year plan of rotating, so that bid is what we want to get done for our city, we submit it to them and then they combine all of it and make a bid. So then we have a cost comparison based on what we think our roads would cost versus this bid and we can choose? Is that, am I understanding that right?
There, there wouldn't be a choice at that point. It is publicly bid.
Okay.
And that contractor, whomever is awarded the contract, you know, has brought his price or his best price forward in hopes that he's awarded the contract to do all of the work for these thirteen cities.
Gotcha, okay.
So it's one contractor that gets all, all the cities that are part of the JPA that's submitting quantities. Our numbers that we have as estimates or placeholders in our six-year plan are just that, they are estimates based on two thousand and sixteen pricing. We can look and compare and likely what we will do is we'll adjust the plan now according to what comes in as a bid price.
Okay.
We'll adjust that plan so it's a fluid document and we have real-time pricing in that document.
That's what I would like to see is some, what our savings is based on that. And if it works out to be great, then we'll stay in here or go elsewhere. I appreciate it.
Right, you have the flexibility.
As it's publicly bid, we would have the opportunity to see the other contractors that submit their pricing. So we'll see, you know, various pricing from other contractors, whomever bids on the, on the total project.
Thanks. I think it's a great idea.
Just to clarify it and even better, each individual item is, they'll pick different contractors. So like striping, it might be this contractor, seal coating could be a different one, crack sealing. So it's not like one contractor gets it all where he's high here and low there. They pick a contractor, make them bid each individual item.
What I'm understanding though is right here is like, let's say for instance, thirteen cities, we, let's say our volume of what we need done this next year is going to be small compared to Coon Rapids will be big, but we can benefit by being the consortium by benefiting because our projects will be based on a larger volume. So let's say we have like, right, so we have like one-third the size of what Coon Rapids does or Hart Neils or Andover. They have more than us, but the fact is that we are all together as JPA, that we benefit for the pricing for the whole.
And it's all on unit rate, so you pay the same unit rate Coon Rapids does.
You know, even.
Your quantities might be a little less or more, but you pay whatever unit rates actually put in the ground is your final price.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. So Coon Rapids may be three times larger in servicing area than we are, but we're benefiting from the, from the JPA. That's what, that's what I think is important. Joe?
I'm all for it. Pretty much I agree with you said earlier. And do they, do we get then as a broken down into the square footage, surface area and everything, or how do they split it up, I guess, for the breakdown of pricing?
I, I believe it'll be based on quantity, that quantity or volume pricing. So if, Craig, help me out with this. If they're talking three hundred ton of trap rock, they're going to give you a price per ton of trap rock. So that'll be the number and then we just multiply that number by our, our quantity that we decided we need.
Using the price break we get, using the volume break we get from the volume.
Right.
I'm all for it. Jerry?
Um, I've got some questions now. Say for example, the seal coating. And Rapids has twelve miles of seal coating to do and we only have one mile. And all the seal coating is bid due, company A B C. Are we going to get the priority? I mean, how are we assured that they have enough staff on hand to do both projects? Because I mean, seal coating has this, this weather contingent and there's this temperature contingent. You know, so if we have a wet year, I'm company A B C, you know, I'm going to go, I'm going to do, going to have the seal coating because that's where I'm going to make the most money and push off St. Francis. How do we know that we're going to get priority on our projects? Because I mean, in Minnesota, we've got short holiday season. I mean, to be honest with you, and it is weather contingent. Once we sign with, you know, and I'm not saying this because I like the idea of, of cities working together and sharing services and getting group pricing. But it's one thing that I am concerned about is how does St. Francis ensure that our projects get a priority that we feel they should get? Because I really don't care if Coon Rapids gets all their stuff done. I want St. Francis stuff done.
But I think by reading, what I read in there, I think what happens is once we agree upon the price, then it comes down to us to negotiate with the, with the contractor. Does it or does it not?
No, it's like any.
Not for price wise, but for work wise.
It's like any project you do, there's a specification which has conditions. And they might give them till April fifteenth or whatever, September fifteenth to do all the cities. And if they don't make it, there's liquidated damages. So I guess there could be a year they don't make it, but then they're getting, they're going to have those damages assessed.
Because I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't get some contractor that perhaps gets overextended, which we've had in the past, that contractor's taken on too much and all of a sudden the city's left holding the bag with, with the road that's halfway completed and there we go, you know. So I just, just want to make sure that that happens, that.
Yeah, not that it can happen, but there is liquidated damages.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, but I, I'm, in general, I'm in favor of the idea of cost sharing, regionalization, group pricing, and that's exactly what this is.
Yeah, exactly. Taking advantage of a volume out there that we don't have.
Yep, and, and we could go with it or not go with it. You know, we see some of the bids too. I mean, that's, that's one thing I kind of like as well.
Right, there's flexibility. There's, but what I also like about it, I mean, in the fact, and I just understand some, Coon Rapids has been doing this since two thousand and four, so that's thirteen years of play. I got to believe that they've crossed, got to some eyes and crossed some t's to prevent they, they run into a problem. So any other discussion on this? All right, well then I want to entertain a motion here to accept North Metro Regional Street Maintenance Consortium, Resolution two thousand and seventeen dash forty-eight. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Biel makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bauer makes that second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? When I do it, no, okay. Okay, all right.
We're saving monies here.
All right. Item J, canceling the second meeting in December, Resolution two thousand and seventeen dash forty-nine. Joe, you want to bring that up? I don't know if we have a lot on the schedule for this.
Yeah, well, Mayor, members of the council, we, staff, we talked about last Tuesday, we tried to figure out what agenda items we have for that meeting. Since it's close on holidays, we didn't find anything other than routine bills available, which could wait until the January meeting. So unless there's anything pressing or if you guys want to still get together, you know, we're suggesting, considering the cancellation.
Right, well, you know, that, that meeting would have been on the eighteenth of Monday, one week before Christmas, and I know people, that's one of the big holidays of the year, people travel out of town. So, you know, if there's really nothing pressing, you're saying on the, on the agenda for us?
Yeah, we haven't been able to identify anything that would be on that particular agenda.
Planning its zoning's on the twentieth, right?
Yeah.
I was going to say, it's kind of ironic. There's like the busiest planning and zoning commission agenda I've seen in a long time.
That's two days.
Two days after we're considering canceling city council meeting. That's the way it goes.
Yeah.
That means the January meeting will be big.
Yeah, pretty much. All right, well, any discussion on this at all or?
I'll be around if anybody wants to hang out. I don't see a reason to make staff.
Yeah, I agree with you, Rich. I don't see any reason to make staff hang around just to do that. All right, well then I'll entertain a motion to, for canceling the second meeting in December, Resolution two thousand and seventeen dash forty-nine. Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Skorodan makes a second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Moving on, now, item ten, meeting over the public bar. Do we have anybody signed up?
No.
Nobody? Okay, all right. So I've, I've moved the attorney's report to, after the council member reports. So I'm going to start with council member reports and I will start with Joe Billbar.
Well, I made it to the tree lighting with fifteen minutes spare. Fortunately, I worked late that day and there really wasn't that many people there. I see not a lot of firefighters out there, but I really did get into it a lot today, but I forgot nothing.
Jerry?
Um, I don't have much to report about the council, for council members before, but one thing I was asking, I know Rob brought up earlier, is trying to get some of our jurisdictions on the same page as far as some of the projects we're doing. Is there a way that we, maybe we could have a worksheet, a community worksheet that, that some of the developers in town, what their projects are, that we could do an overlay of what the city projects are, and we could do an overlay of what the school projects are. Try to schedule some of these things down at the same time. So I would think that there would be huge cost savings and some of these projects could probably get done a lot better versus, you know, putting down some asphalt, a couple of months later, cut the asphalt out, put them, I mean, now we have a crack in our asphalt where there's moisture to permeate and start popping asphalt and then, and three years later, we've got a pothole there. So, you know, perhaps that could be something that, that we do and I don't know who would be in charge of it, but I would be in favor of perhaps, you know, putting together a committee of mayor, of maybe a school superintendent, and then maybe somebody on the developer side or whatever, and just see what projects they plan on doing so we don't, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel and duplicating some of these projects. Because I think what, accepting these improvements today show that there's a real efficiency there.
Doesn't lack communication.
Right.
I agree.
You know, and if, Rob is exactly right. If the school maybe would have known that this developer was maybe that close, I mean, maybe they could have put it off. A couple of months, developer could have pushed it up a couple of months, met in the middle, next thing you know, we have a.
On the other hand, if they wanted to get it done and they weren't sure they could get it done, they did it the way they did it. That's my concern. See, that's, you know, if you're not sure you're going to get approval, you jump ahead of the game and put the cart before the ox and then come back and now say, because as I mentioned to you before, we learned on that, by the way, our backs are to the wall. I don't appreciate that as a mayor, I'm sure the councils doesn't either, or staff, our backs are to the wall. We had no choice to go forward because they had already done it. Pretty much other than the conditional use of rights we put on.
No, I, I agree. I was just, just looking at the big picture. If there's a way to maybe try and get everybody.
On the other hand, if they wanted to get it done and they weren't sure they could get it done, they did it the way they did it, that's my concern, see?
Right.
See, that's, you know, if you're not sure you're gonna get approval, you jump ahead of the game and put the cart before the ox and then come back and now say, because as I mentioned to you before, we learned on that, by the way, our backs are to the wall. I don't appreciate that as a mayor, I'm sure the councils doesn't either, or staff, our backs are to the wall, we had no choice to go forward because they had already done it, pretty much other than conditional use requirements we put on.
No, I, I agree, I was just, just looking at the big picture, if there's a way to maybe try and get everybody's plans on the same page and we can just go over it, and then maybe concentrate on areas where there is, or, I mean, where there's no overlay, then we ought to just watch it.
Well, 'cause like you say, I mean, you drive down the streets sometimes and you'll see it's here ripped up and then six months, two years later, you'll see another utility coming, you think all utilities can get together, but they don't.
Well, I know, my experience with Center Point as well, I know they try to keep an ear out if they're gonna redo a road and they got something they wanna do, they try to get in at the same time to save time. They gotta patch the road and that, so, I know a lot of utilities do try to do it ahead of the game.
You know, and that's why, and I, I'm not sure how we do it and what type of communication we need to put out there to the utilities or whoever, but, you know, maybe it's time we start thinking, you know, planning, how are we gonna stop some of the problems that we have? Rather keep putting out these fires as they come, right?
Well, maybe we should, maybe we should put together after the first year, a project of some sort like that, you know, where we could have, you know, some of us on board with it and that's some staff on board with it, and see if we could put dealers out once a month, just giving them some, say, is there anything in the works that you'd like to communicate with us, that we could try to, you know, work, put on the same schedule, whatever, that we're not trying to, you know, go against each other. I mean, but it is definitely worth looking into, because I agree with both of you that it's a problem, and like I say again, I was not happy the way the partnership was done.
I agree, and I think Rob will see a lot of overlap with this assessment, I really do.
Yeah, I agree, I agree too.
I would like to go with you.
No.
That's a pretty good two.
Funny what Jerry's asking, Bert, now, how do you get all the stakeholders in a room? And kinda how, why do you cash your net?
Yeah.
There's a lot of things that affect a lot of people.
Yeah, yeah.
So you kinda, it's not an easy thing to go do.
No, I didn't say it's gonna be easy, but I definitely would like to get a handle or at least more workability with IST-15 for projects they may consider doing without notifying us.
And, and just, you know, and there's so many jurisdictions, there's the county, there's the school, there's the city, and then there's private developers, and there's utilities to make, and then on top of that, then we have some of our citizens, you know, they're renewing their driveway or something. Wouldn't it be nice to try a group of...
Well, you can't ever accommodate everybody, but sure would be helpful to try to handle it, that's for sure.
We cut it down by half would be a huge improvement.
I agree, I agree, so, something that we should be thinking about for after the first year. All right, anything else here?
No, that's everything.
Rob?
I'd like to say that Santa on the fire truck's gonna be December the seventh. On the webpage is going to be a map laid out of how the Santa Claus is gonna come through your portion of the town.
And on Facebook.
On our Facebook page, Facebook Fire Department. Also, two routes, right? East and West are gonna have two Santas out there going around collecting food, so please, please donate. Donate food, come on out, into the streets, meet the fire department, meet the firefighters that represent your city. We're gonna have some city council members out there, and it's a good time to bring the community together and donate a lot of food. The food goes to the local food shelf, so it's stuff that comes back tenfold to the city of St. Francis, so, that's a good thing. Also, one of those Santas will be at the police department, December the fourteenth. Come on out and get your picture taken with Santa.
Make sure he's gonna like it. A real Santa's gonna be there.
Other than that, that's all I really have. Have a safe holiday season and support the city, let's do it.
Thank you, Rich.
Nope, I didn't mean anything other than, yeah, everyone has a good break, hopefully take some time off of work and do it with family and we'll be back on January, January second?
Fourth, the second, yeah, second.
For another year?
Okay, first of all, I wanna correct myself, you know, when I said about, about the COA and the staff and everything like that, I meant the word cohesive. That's the word I was looking for.
Not coalescing.
Cohesive. And I truly believe that that's what we have, eleven months into our administration, I truly believe that staff and the departments are working hand in hand. I think, I feel a really good feeling in my gut, which is what I go by, and I feel the public now is seeing a change in their government working for them. Believe me when I tell you that, I know for myself, and I know I can speak for the council, but we don't forget who we work for, and that we serve the public, first, last, and always. Wanna mention again, the website, I happen to be on Blaine's website, I'm not knocking Blaine, but I was on their website here recently looking for something, took me about eight clicks to get it, where I'm finding out now that ours is within a two or three click, I like this a lot. And in fact, I was on, I have lakes and it was just as much difficulty to find something, so, I was really pleased by what I've seen here. And again, as I mentioned earlier, it is a work in progress, but it's a big change and from the input of the public, well, over time, we'll make it better and better. But I wanna thank Sandy, I wanna thank Jen, I wanna thank Lori, I wanna thank Kate, I wanna thank Anna when she was here for all the work you did with it, I know I was part of it too, but you guys took the handle and the ball and ran with it. It looks good, it's, it's, it's got a lot of information on it, it's a good source for the public to start, you know, when you're starting to do a project or whatever, or something you wanna do in your, in your house or whatever, go on there, check out the code, whatever, there's numbers to call, communication, all that. I will be giving my picture to it now that I've been requested to do that, now that I won't make anybody afraid of it, so, I will do that. I wanna, I wanna thank, thank the public for their support in the, last year with the new administration, and I hope you see a change coming. It's gonna get better as time goes on, we are looking forward. The one thing we brought to this city is long-term thinking, which is a big thing here, I think. We're investing in our, in our, in our city, which is a good thing for long-term. I think all the departments are working really well as a machine right now and I'm looking forward to continuing that next year. Also, I'd like to say that, you know, with holidays, I mean, be safe, be careful, you know, if you're drinking, let someone else drive, if you're, if you're drinking too much, stay at home, I could go on and be a parent, but I don't wanna be a parent here, just wanna be, I want you to enjoy the holiday season and I want you to be safe, so, please keep that in mind while you're doing that. Go Vikings, I'd like to say that right now, I'm not gonna get my hopes up too much, but they are looking doggone good right now, so I don't wanna say that much there. Also, I had to say, anyways, also wanna let everybody know, Quick Trip did close on that lot in front of the city hall, they have put up no trespassing signs on the building, which is good for, for the police to be able to do something if somebody goes in there. They also doing some, getting everything lined up to promote that, which they're hoping to do very shortly, so, keep your eyes open, we're finally gonna see that Maestrosa get taken down, and you'll actually be able to find out where the city hall is for the first time. Now, that will change after they build their structure, but in the meantime, we will know where it's at. So, on that, I'm gonna say thank you to everybody again, wish you a very, very happy Christmas and happy new year. And at this particular time, I'm gonna proceed to go to, I'm gonna read this, in a few minutes, I'm gonna close the meeting on Minnesota Statute, Section 13D, point oh-three, subsect, whatever. I'm just gonna close it to the public, this part of the meeting will end for the public, we'll go to closed session for the, I can't say it like all this, but what I can tell you is, we will close it and go into a closed session for the labor negotiations, which we said we would do. By the way, also I hope that everybody enjoys the fact that we are informal, formal type of council meeting, that we do make mistakes, we do correct them. I'm one of the ones that makes most of the mistakes, but I do correct them, so thank you, once again, we will go into a closed session at this particular time. I'll close the...
Need a motion in a second to go into closed session?
Do I have a motion to go? If you want, make that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Muehlbauer, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.